Okay, folks, we'll bring the meeting to order with the same of our pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you guys, we've got kind of a short agenda this evening, so shouldn't take us too terribly long to wrap this up. If for some reason I've mentioned before the meeting, we can't take care of this by twenty after. I'll be turning the meeting over to Acting Mayor Stephen Fightin'. Mike and I have fire department interviews to hire in firefighters as well this evening. So first of all, we need to approve our minutes from the December eighth, two thousand fourteen, where you're really scheduled council meeting. And I have a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion.
And I will second the motion. On the floor by Stephanie and second by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, agenda this evening?
I have two additions, Toby.
Okay.
One of them is Energy Insights information. We have two rebates that are going to be coming forward. Also Chief Eric Kennick has a presentation as well.
Now, you guys want to throw the chief on top?
Yes.
And then I'll put the Energy Insights, the low outstanding balance for City of Peers Electric, folks.
Okay, any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, would you motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second that.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie and second by Mike to approve the agenda for this evening. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Chief, Eric Kennick.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Something that I haven't done since the three years I've been here was sort of, with what I do here, full time, of course, I do what I can, but I'm drawn by some good part-time officers. And I have two that go up and above what I expect from them, and I'm very lucky to have them on board. When I'm away from town, they step up, they take their phone calls, they take, they make sure the City of Peers is run like it does when I'm here, when they're working their regular shifts. The first one I'll mention is Jason Oshider. He's about what he does for City of Peers, he works full-time for the Sheriff's Department. He's not classified full-time, but he puts in full-time hours, works extra overtime, and he still puts in his twenty to thirty hours in paid period here for me. And to me, it's unbelievable, doesn't go unnoticed. Jason Warrenburg is no different. He just took a full-time job for the Sheriff's Department, starts here in a couple of weeks. Great for him. He spends three-quarter time for the Sheriff's Department, but puts in a lot of hours above his forty each week. On top, though, he runs a great gutter business, but he still puts in hours here for City of Peers. And with the first one, Jason, you want to step forward? I have a plaque for you, Mr. Menace.
Mike giving the other prize.
That's coming up after the picture.
Congratulations, Jason. Thank you for your service to the City of Peers. And now, you get that new schedule, you need a calendar, so there you go. Keep on top of things.
Thanks, Jason. And the other one is Jason Warrenburg. He's something that he really steps up from here on here, and Mr. Mayor Scott, your flag, Jason.
Get out of the way for the picture. Michael, Jason.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Look at the camera.
Yeah.
You got photos for this.
And give him his calendar.
Write all your appointments down.
No, he's got to get a picture with your calendar, Jason.
That basically disappeared.
Oh, we did.
Thanks for voting you, good job.
Thanks for coming in, boys. Thank you.
Guys, on behalf of the city council, I would just like to say thank you very much for your commitment and dedication to our city. We are very fortunate to have you two fellows here, and we do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Never mind that, keep going. You're under time, honey.
A magnet approval, Scott, what do we got going there?
All right, Toby, if you look in your packets, there is a call contact list. We discussed this a few weeks prior to this. It's the Peers Municipal Electric Customers are going to receive a magnet for on their spreadsheet in regards to moving contact and any kind of outage during call. So this is the size of the magnet, it's a four by six. We found that was adequate for enough space. Talked to Bob, we think that it'll work good as far as what we need to provide for the customers. We're going to shrink this down, obviously, and cut out as much information that we can in the, with your sheets and your packets. I reached out and received two quotes from two different providers in the City of Peers. So I'd like to move forward with Pat Watercott with Burning Company. He was the lower rate. We're looking at doing the four by six at thirty mil, which is a stronger magnet, and do a thousand.
Okay.
It is forty-five cents per magnet.
No, I think it'll be nice if our residents actually have a contact number. It'd be some of these folks trying to get a hold of certain council members, maybe can't get them at home, and maybe will have their cell phone numbers and maybe call in Eric or whoever they can possibly think of to try and get a hold of. So this will be direct contact for residents, I think it'll be a good deal.
And just for information, too, I did reach out to both Mike Fightin' and Pat Watercott.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the better of both.
The other thing the residents need to know, or the customers, is they have to call either us or Bob. They cannot call the electric, the power company direct because there's security out there.
Do we need approval on that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make the motion then, that we order the magnets.
I would second that motion. On the floor by Donnie and second by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next item we have on our agenda, I mean, folks are all aware of the Veterans Memorial, that's going to be going into Billik Park next to the Fire Hall. Know our veterans and been working very hard at trying to find money for this project. They've done an outstanding job to this point. I believe they're sitting about four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars short this time of last time I talked to, which was on Veterans Day. I guess I would like to see the city make some type of commitment to finish up the balance of that, that cost for the Veterans Memorial.
I did put a sheet out, too, Toby. It was our support donations for what we donate annually from the city's standpoint. It's under the general fund governmental, general governmental support donation. So each year we budget approximately eight thousand for donations. You can see on that sheet what we donate to, looking back at prior years, those are typical donations that we make every year. So just from a budget standpoint, as of this year, we are about a thousand dollars over, but that was due to the fact of Commercial Club, we actually related for the fireworks, their, their annual fireworks. So looking in the next year, we need to keep in mind that as far as from our budget standpoint, too, maybe we want to cut back on a few things that, too, are already, you guys want to handle that.
Well, I think all these things that we donate to are very important, but I can't see anything more important than honoring our veterans. You know, I think that's extremely important for our community to recognize the commitments that they've made, that families have made.
But I wanted to provide you guys with the information, seeing as they are as far as our budget.
Like I said, they're all important things that we donate to. But if it moves cutting back a little bit of the old donation, we can get just to go through that, I think.
Do you have a more up-to-date estimate of what they're still short? You said that was back at Veterans Day, I was thinking people are still making donations to them.
I guess I don't know. At that time, they were a four, forty-five hundred short.
Were they going to do some kind of a, get together, some kind of fundraiser or anything since then, or?
I thought it was something else.
But I don't know.
I think before we decide how much we want to donate, we should find out what they have in mind yet for.
Yeah, and if we wait until after January, then. Well, we wouldn't be able to do it till after January one.
Yeah.
But like I said, I think that, I think it's the least we can do is, is. Well, definitely I'd be in favor of doing something.
I am, too, but I, I would like to know where they're at and if they have anything else in mind yet.
Well, let's, let's do this. Chuck Hoover usually stops in and gives me an update once in a while in regards to this. So I'm going to try and contact Chuck.
Chuck, Fred.
I'm sorry, Fred. And I'll see what, where they are first, you know, where they are by actually in regards to their raising the money and.
I'd make the motion to table until second meeting in January, and then we have some information and we could go with that. Or even if you can find out, no? Find out, no?
Yeah, I'll try and contact. Or we can put a certain amount, up to a certain amount, I guess, if, you know, they have thirty-five hundred dollars left, City of Peers will donate a certain X amount of money up to, if they still plan on doing a fundraiser, something.
Well, why don't, why don't, yeah, why don't we just do this? Why don't we find out what they got left or what their balance is or wherever, where they're sitting. And that's something we can, Scott, if you can check on that, it's something.
I'll contact with Fred within.
Yeah, why don't you give Fred a call and find out, and then it's something we can deal with in the first meeting in January. Because I don't know if they've actually got the stolen order, if they had enough money up front to order a stolen, any of that. I know it's something needs to get done, so. They're looking at it, wrapping this right away in spring, I would take it.
Do we need a second to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, if he's making a motion to table, I'd second that motion to table. And second by Matt, all those in favor, please second it, by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Morrison County Animal Humane Society Information, doing something a little different this year, Chief, aren't they?
They are, they're switching it up where, you know, now we pay, if I take a cat or a dog there, it's a lotted fee of either forty or fifty dollars. And they're going to across the county now, just not Peers, but it's going to be every township, every city. It's a selected amount per household, and the bill that they send me was two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. Last year, I didn't pull up the exact number, but I know I didn't take more than eight dogs there last year at fifty dollars a pop. But the only way that we can utilize the Humane Society is through this contract. Otherwise, I do grab a dog, I won't have that access of going through the back door of the key like I do now, and they'd say, no, we don't have room for that because you're not part of our agreement. And we'd be a lot with placing on this animal.
So basically, and what was the cost of that that I read in here?
Two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Basically twenty-four hundred dollars to take on an average of maybe four dogs a year, that?
Yes.
Average, it was, it averaged around five, five to six hundred dollars a year that we pay.
Currently, and now they want twenty-three.
To take these dogs.
Now they want twenty-three hundred for the same thing.
Correct, yeah.
My question would be is, is do any of those owners want to come back after their animal?
If they do, if they do, they have to pay for them. These are the animals that we get charged for, the dogs are never accounted for, and then, I, it's, it's.
So the only ones we get charged for are the ones that aren't.
The dogs that aren't getting accounted for, yes.
Well, somebody goes there and claims a dog, we don't get charged.
We don't get billed, no, we don't get billed.
So now, maybe it's actually three to four dogs that actually don't get claimed, and we're paying twenty-three hundred and, or twenty-four hundred dollars for those.
Right.
Or we start dealing with dogs that are claimed.
When I spoke to them, what happened is.
And, you know, we pick somebody.
Seventy-eight hundred a piece. To get a fee.
I, I don't know. When I spoke to management, what happened is there's so much money that they're sticking to these animals with shots and maintenance, where they're not getting reimbursed for them. This is their way of trying to solve the problem of being owning so much, you know.
Well, I, I understand that, but I mean, it seems a little ridiculous that we can be sitting here looking at maybe three or four dogs that we, we want to charge the city twenty, twenty-four hundred dollars for, it's ridiculous.
No, I agree, Toby, I agree all the way.
It's ridiculous.
Oh, what's, what's the next step, though?
That's the hard part.
Yeah, I guess I don't know, so we have to sit down and figure out if we have any options.
I reached out to some other communities around it to see if they're getting the same bill, not the same, but similar, you know, reference to the number of households. And I'm waiting from that, from the mayor of Buckman, just to see if this is equal across the playing field or not. But I know we'll have to do something because.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, it looks like we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Does it have to be just the City of Peers? Like, what if we would, or is that?
That's something I need to talk to.
Like, what if we came up with Lastro Buckman?
They're all getting their own bill.
They're all getting their own bill.
But can't we?
Well, like for us, I already, I'm, I'm the ordinance enforcer at Buckman, so we can utilize theirs through here. The problem is, like, it depends where you documented the dog was. I suppose they're all look at, well, we came from Ninety-Third Street, once, meaning this dog is Peers.
So that'd be billed to a township.
Yep.
What would you do, Eric, if you did take a dog and you don't have the means of going right into the back door with it? What would you do in that instance? What, what can you, I mean?
Well, volatile, sometimes volatile. I would came up at the.
We're all shot for a day.
So am I, so am I, but it's, the problem is, we have, we used to have a kennel up at City Hall, at the parks. But there, if I bring a dog in on Thursday or Friday, you don't have to come in once a day to maintain it and make sure it's, because I got, I have two dogs myself at home. And I'm not one to take a dog and set them in outside kennel and leave them sit there. So the only humane thing with today's world, and if somebody called and said the dog isn't being taken care of on city property, now somebody's going to put a complaint in on the City of Peers where it's easiest for me to get the dog to Little Falls, that way I can wash my hands, and there's no maintenance, no lock, keep, it's done. But I agree, like, like you, everybody's saying here, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars.
That's ridiculous. That's a lot, that's.
It is.
It's ridiculous, yeah, that's totally ridiculous, so.
I'm curious how many, I'm curious how many municipalities they've gotten to sign this contract with them.
Right.
Already.
I have no idea.
No idea, so. You'd be surprised, too, at how many complaints we get about cats, dogs.
We do, it's, it's unbelievable.
It's non-stop.
If you collect it, have cats interrupt it. You got to catch them first. But, you know, that's, that's a big chunk of money. But the alternative would, you know.
I mean, if, if we're going to haul three or four dogs here for twenty-four hundred dollars, that's, that's, that's crazy, and I said, we can't be doing that.
Well, I want to correct you, it's not three or four dogs, technically, we get billed.
I want to say for it's.
We do not get billed on the dogs that they claim.
No, the only thing that's coming through.
But now they're not asking. We still pay about five to six hundred dollars annually. So that doesn't include the dogs that are not claimed.
The only bill we're getting is the dogs that we're not claimed, that I take in.
So if we take in, let's say we take in four or five dogs, two of those are claimed.
Most of the dogs I take in, Mayor.
We don't get charged for that.
But most, most of the dogs I take in, Mayor, though, are, are dogs that aren't finding the rightful owners, and they're being placed into another hole, and it's the way, I don't know, people just go along. A lot of them, dogs are, they're, they're from up the farms, there's a work farm I do with all the time. When you do do it, they don't want to claim ownership of the dog because now it's off their hands finally, and this is their easy way to get rid of the dog. And it's, so, it is, it's, it's an unfair mess, but it's a, it's a mess we have to address.
And this is supposed to take, this is supposed to take place the first of the year, they won't take any from us at, if they won't have this signed, or they will, maybe if they have room.
We have time to address it.
Okay.
It's the next one, it's something that, as long as, I know which way I can go.
We have to keep moving forward on that, we have a little bit of time.
Okay.
Okay.
Cable that, do we have more?
Uh, yeah, can I get a motion to have that table?
Make a motion to table that.
Motion on the floor by Matt, seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Outstanding balances for the City of Peers Electric Accounts.
Two meetings ago, we discussed what the last, or what the outstanding balance on our electric account was at. So currently, if you look at, there's two pages in your packets. The first one has a total balance at the bottom of just under twelve thousand. I know we discussed so many years back, when do we want to draw the line and find out those accounts? If they're back to two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, nine, ten, I mean, those are X amount of years ago. You do not have social security numbers for those accounts, therefore, we really have no way of claiming that money if they are not in. Or I, I mean, unless we send Eric out there, try knocking the door, I don't know, well, that's going to work. So the next page actually broke it down. So up to two thousand thirteen, or just before two thousand thirteen, there's sixty-five, fifty-nine, forty. That we could potentially think about just wiping, writing it out, yes. And then in two thousand thirteen, there's about fourteen hundred dollars out there. And then as of this year, finals, we are doing a lot of revenue recapture. Like I said, now we are able to do that and able to collect their social security number and receive payment. We just apply that to their taxes when they move on or if they don't pay.
The ones that were sent to collection, have you had any luck with that?
Sometimes and sometimes not. It, it depends on what, you know, how their taxes are filed, things like that. We might get twenty bucks here and twenty bucks there, and it's just a matter of monitoring it. But we typically will get that payment back. So as of two thousand fourteen and forward, I have been applying, unless they give me a fake social security number, I have been applying that to revenue recapture, we will receive it then, so. But from two thousand thirteen to prior, I really don't, I can't guarantee we're going to get that. Well, it's a decision that we're going to have to decide, because if we don't go after these accounts from two thousand six to two thousand twelve, you're looking at over half the revenue that we have out there that we're just going to wash our hands clean and then say we don't care about that anymore.
Well, but if these are people that, if these are people that are long gone and you have no way of tracking them, other than the chief doing a lot of work and how much money are we willing to have to spend on Eric doing that kind of work to get that back?
What piece of letter needs, all you need is a, the magic number?
Well, the thing with it is, is.
We need to find the people to pay their bill.
Yeah, the thing with it is, we need to, we need to make sure that we're getting social security numbers.
And that's what we're doing now, but we weren't.
Prior, we weren't, we weren't. Yeah. Um, why don't we, um, how many of these were turned into a, a collection? Or are returning them into a collection if they're on the revenue recapture?
No, we don't want to turn into collections because we're going to pay a price.
The problem lies within the, you turn them into collections, you're only going to, if they, if they have to involve lawyers or anything like that, you're going to get maybe a return of fifty percent. As soon as they sign the certified letter, or they have a lawyer notified, you'll be lucky to get twenty-five to thirty percent.
And the thing is.
At that point, basically, all your money is somebody's credit.
Some of these are higher due to the fact of penalties occurring. They keep penalties occurring, so that's what you get.
Okay, folks, at this time, I'm going to have to turn the review agenda.
Now, before we go, what do you want to do about this?
Well, there's not much, there isn't much we can do, right? I mean, we can, we can vote right now to write it off, but I, is that something we're going to have to do by the first of the year?
I don't know, do we want to table this? That's my question, for you guys.
Yeah, I, I would like to redoes it, if it's okay with you guys.
Absolutely, yeah, I would, too.
Can you get a motion to have it tabled?
I make a motion to table the outstanding electric accounts.
Motion on the floor by Matt.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. I would like to make a motion that Mike and I be excused from the meeting, and I will turn the meeting over to Acting Mayor Stephen Fightin', to finish up the agenda.
Second that.
And second by Steph, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you, guys, sorry we have to run, but we can't leave our, our interviewees.
Yeah, thank you, David.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to you guys, too.
Merry Christmas, Mikey.
Merry Christmas.
Have anything else for us, Chief? That was it? Good.
One additional.
Yeah, I thought you were going to put that down a little, so, okay, so we got the Energy Insights?
Correct, just as information, I actually just got this today on the run it by council for the last meeting. Our goal is to reach one and a half percent. That is a state goal that is mandated to us, we are very familiar with that. We are around that, we're around that point six, point seven range of savings, so we are attempting to make that goal. We have to keep in mind that there are so many businesses and so many residential people, places of employment and residential homes in our community that it's, I don't want to say impossible to reach that goal, but we need a lot more, we need more businesses in town to reach this goal in words. So I am techni, or I'm currently having Energy Insights write us a letter to the state stating that. Stating that, you know, we are making attempts to reach our goal, even though we're the ones losing on it. But with that being said, we are, we are attempting to reach our goal. Obviously, there are factors that play that.
But if they don't apply for it, or they, or, or we don't reach the goal because the customer doesn't want it, it's not a penalty to the City of Peers, there's nothing we can do about it.
I was looking more into that, we might be subject to penalty at some point coming, coming down the road, the way they made it sound. If we don't reach our goals. So, because there was, I, I got an email from the state stating that we're not reaching our goal, so that's why I'm writing a letter, and that's what other small cities in our position are doing, too.
What, a couple of things, what can we do to pursue more businesses or pursue more residents to not incur a fine?
Well, the thing I can do, go physically approach these businesses and say, hey. Energy Insights is doing that for us. And the thing is, like Reds, they just did a huge upgrade. Well, guess what, they're upgraded for X amount of years now, we can't go back to their business.
We'll never beat the goal, year after year after year, it's impossible.
No, it's just, as long as we keep attempting to reach a goal, as long as we get some percentage of an increase or of a savings on electric and things like that, I think we'll be okay, but it's just a matter of dealing with it year to year. That's what it comes down to. So we are, I mean, we're at point seven, so that's seventy percent, that's passing a test in high school, for example, so. Pass the test.
Is there anything that we can, is there anything we can do on our part? Is there anything we can do in our part to make that look better, I guess, towards Energy Insights? Hey, we've sent out a letter personally inviting these businesses alongside of what you're already doing.
Energy Insights is doing that, it's more so to the state. And what do you, I mean, we can only do so much in regards to, like I said, what state.
Second off, what, what type of fines are we looking at, possibly?
That's, I don't think, I really think it's more of a threat, just to try and get us to save energy.
Sure.
It's not possible. But that's, I mean, we're the ones losing money. So, but with that being said, if you look back on the next page, Charlotte sent me, Pierce Foods wants to update their night curtains and their coolers. Holy Trinity has a lighting in the gymnasium, which I think that is a very good one for Holy Trinity. I am requesting to put this into next year to help next year's percentage. And if you look into the next page, and this first one, that's your, the electric fund for the CIP program, we are about six hundred eighty dollars over our budget of what we budgeted for. So we're, we're, we're in our, in line with things with, with Energy Insights and our electric savings. So with that being said, I think that, I personally think we should, we should push this into next year, get into this week to go through next year, start our new year, and hopefully get a better percentage, get it up to twenty, for example, so.
Yeah, I agree.
That is what I have for the matter.
We don't need reaction on that at this point, then.
Um, I would, let's get a motion in a, in a second to, to move forward with the rebates in January.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the rebate for electric in January.
And ask you then.
Let's do that. And second that motion.
And a motion and a second to move the rebates that are here into January two thousand fifteen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. What else do you have?
Department reports, Eric doesn't have anything, so I just have a couple of things, just to remind you, Christmas Eve, we are closed. City Hall is closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Sunday. Yes, Donnie, we are.
Again, you're off?
We, we, we also, obviously, are closed on the first, but we are open the thirty-first, but I would request that we have a half a day, because a lot of businesses close at noon, correct? Or what are your feelings on that?
Normally, we're closed half a day for New Year's Eve.
Yes.
Normally, because the other one is the day you just go out and drink all day long. I really don't care, I got stuff to do, it doesn't matter, but we want to have electricity running for the second half of the day.
Linda, what does the county do, do they close half?
Linda, what does the county do, do they close halfway?
They're not closed at all.
Okay, we can stay open.
Can we legally, can we legally close government center?
We can do whatever we want.
You can do whatever you want.
Okay.
Eric, I would, are you working the whole day?
That day?
I have no idea.
Back and forth?
You'll be working all night and morning.
To me, Scott, if if I knew you haven't had any calls or anything going on, if you feel that, that you need, that you want to take off, I would say go ahead and shut it off.
Okay.
Make sure you sort of sign on doors, saying.
Yeah.
I guess it's up to you guys, but that would be my personal opinion.
I don't know, I guess I'd make a motion to only stay open half the day on New Year's Eve.
I don't think I'd make a motion, that was just more of an information, we have a motion.
Somebody second, will you? Second it.
Oh, second it.
All of them, they're all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Close that door.
Close that door on a New Year's Eve, with the exception, if you've got fifty million people showing up on your door, you'll still, you'll take care of them.
I don't want to close that.
I know, but that's okay.
Merry Christmas. I honestly would probably stay here anyway, but just, yeah.
But you have the option to shut the door and nobody will.
There you go.
I will make a motion to adjourn if there's no other business.
I'd second that motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn meeting, all those in favor? Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried, meeting is done.
Carry, did Little Falls ever dress that human society at the union?
I don't know, mine's supposed to die.